Plead us in the pledge of allegiance. If everybody can stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, I guess, to say that. My chair almost ran away. I'd like to welcome Nancy Placetti, the president of the Historical Society, who has a presentation. Nancy?
Thank you, Mary, Dan, Mike, Dick, for letting me have this time. I know that when the new town hall opened, there were many inquiries about some wooden structures that were in the main entrance, in the main hallway. And I happen to have a picture of those.
Ooh, nice.
These are bow roof trusses from the old Hollis Airport. And yes, folks, if you didn't know it, one time Hollis actually had an airport. And with Mike's assistance, he's going to show you what the Buckston-Hollis Historical Society has created to hopefully hang somewhere in this building. This is an actual photograph of the hangar building from the Hollis Airport. The airport was located on the Plains Road in what we call today the California Field, the area behind the Saco River Community TV Station. And I need to thank Patrick Bonssant from Saco River Community TV. It was his expertise that got the resolution on that photograph to the point where we could actually have it enlarged. And being a former schoolteacher, right there, I don't know if you can see the bend, is where the roof trusses came from. I promise not to give an entire history lecture. Thank you, Mike. I think you can put it down.
Okay.
We're good. But just for a little background, in 1940, in October, was the first time that an article was published suggesting the Hollis Plains for a possible military base. Eventually, also, it would become a commercial airport. At a town meeting at the Town of Hollis on March 3rd of 1941, the town voted to establish a committee to look into the possibility of creating an airport in Hollis. The reason at that time, the Portland Airport had not been finished, and it was in what was referred to as the fog belt. As far as military planes in particular were concerned, the military was looking for an airfield that would be beyond the fog belt in times of a possible emergency. Air miles, Hollis was 16 air miles from Portland and on a direct line. It was also on a direct flight path between Bangor and Manchester, New Hampshire. Hollis was the perfect venue, they thought, the Hollis Plains, because the old Worcester and Nashua Division of the Boston and Maine Railroad formed the south boundary of the Hollis Plains. As well, you had several trunk highways that were very close by. And so Hollis, they thought, would be a very good place for this airport. Committee was actually formed in 1942. If you look at the Town of Hollis's annual report, you will see that the chairman of the committee, Cecil Clark, and the committee actually went down to Washington, D.C., and met with representatives of the Army Air Corps to present this plan. Eventually, Buckston and Limington formed committees and joined together with Hollis. But Hollis definitely took the lead in forming this airport. Between 1943 and '45, a runway was built, and there are aerial photographs that we have at the Historical Society of that runway from 1945. Of course, what happened, 1945, World War II was over. Germany surrenders, Japan in August later that year, and the great Hollis International Airport of both military and commercial flights never really came to fruition. There was one runway. A.C. Murray Eaton and his father, a local resident, built that particular runway. The Hollis Plains were so flat and so easily camouflaged, they thought, that that's why this would make a good airport. After the war was over, a gentleman by the name of Herb Short and his two partners, Charles Pinkham, excuse me, and Charles Townsend, formed the Hilltop Flying Service or the Hilltop Flying Club. Herb Short was a pilot, he was a bomber pilot. He was the first person to fly a B-29 and land at the Portland Airport. He was kind of a daredevil. He used to like to tease his wife by taking a small Piper Cub plane up in the air, turn off the engine, get it down, dive to about 500 feet, and turn the engine back on. It was called the falling leaf maneuver, and obviously, Mrs. Short was not very pleased with that. We do have recollections and letters from Herb Short's son, Herb Short Jr., or Skip Short, describing what the hangar was like back in 1945, '46. In 1947, the Hilltop Flying Service offered flying lessons, charter planes, rentals of airplanes. They also had several air shows. The 1947 airshow had over 3,000 in attendance on the Plains Road. And just to think of the Plains Road today with all of those cars parked watching these stunt shows. They would have things such as parachute jumping, bomb runs, they would take bags and fill it with lime, and they would fly over a target and see who could drop the lime bags closest. The airport and the Hilltop Flying Service was extremely important in the 1947 Hollis fires. The Town of Hollis actually paid them $390 to fly fire patrols. And it was through their reports that a good portion of Hollis was saved from the '47 fires. By being able to tell the fire crews where the fires were breaking out, the Skelton Dam just happened to be built around the same time, they were able to take workers from the dam and put them on building fire breaks. West Hollis got hit pretty badly, but South Hollis, Salmon Falls Village, and Hollis Center were fairly well saved. Unfortunately, in 1949, the airport and the runway and the Hilltop Flying Service filed for bankruptcy. It was suggested that they just could not make enough revenues from renting planes and offering flying lessons, and they also liked to spend a lot of money on the latest plane or latest innovation that came to their door. It was put up for auction, and the airport itself closed around the early 1950s. The hangar stood until the early 21st century. And there was an opportunity for the town to save it, but the decision was not to. At that time, the three select board members were Stu Gannett, Butch Gannett, and Ben Severance. They were the ones who decided to save the bow roof trusses in case someday they could be used here in Hollis. When I did an interview with Butch, his idea was more like maybe a counter or a tabletop, never really thinking they would be fully restored and hung in a new town hall. And they sat up in the Hollis Town Barn for many years, collecting dust, cobwebs, and mold and mildew. And through the contractors that were hired for this job, Great Falls Construction, they were renovated and they hang where they are today. Our next newsletter at the Buckston-Hollis Historical Society, which is our winter edition, will have a full booklet article on the airport, complete with the many pictures that we have. But we would like to congratulate Hollis on completing the construction of this marvelous building, and that is our gift to you to hang, as well as the photograph of the trusses.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is we're opening the meeting to any public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We thought we would move that up so you didn't have to listen to us go on and on. So does anybody have any public comments? Terry?
Good evening, Terry Walters. I'd like to comment on something, but it's way at the end of the agenda, and I don't know if I'll still be here at that point.
Okay.
If you'd permit me.
Certainly.
You probably all remember several years ago, Brookfield Powell came to town and said that we had a public meeting and they planned to breach the Bar Mills Dam. And the reason for that was they'd have to relicense the dam, and to do that, they'd have to put in an expensive fishway. They didn't want to do that because the dam no longer produced power, so it was an obsolete asset to them. So they said they wanted to, their initial plan was to breach part of the dam, let the river go back to its natural flow. Well, that caused a lot of concern in town, a lot of issues, and Brookfield took several years doing scientific studies on the effects of that dam removal. Well, it's come home to roost now, they've finished their studies. There has been a committee in town, which I serve on, Dan serves on it. There's five residents of Hollis, five residents of Buckfield, and we've had some pretty extensive meetings with Brookfield. And there's issues such as the wells along the river, hydrants, fish passage, whether it's going to be a full or partial removal of the dam, recreation and public access, the power plant, the canal, many other things. In fairness to Brookfield, I think they've listened to us. I think that we've brought, the committee has brought up many concerns that they weren't aware of. And they are now proceeding to the next step, to remove this dam. And prior to that, on October 30th, there'll be a, in this room, there'll be a public here. And I would urge any people from Hollis or Buckston who have interest in this to show up. Don't get your information from the Hollis page, or don't get it from your neighbor. These are the experts, they'll answer your questions. And then you'll have 30 days to comment on their studies. After that, they put in their formal request, a formal decommissioning plan to the federal regulatory agencies, the state agencies like Fish and Game, DEP weigh in also, and then we'll also have a chance then to weigh in again. But, you know, we're trying to negotiate things, but we can't anticipate everything. And so don't rely on the town manager or the select board or this committee. If there's concerns you have, this is your opportunity on the 30th to get out, get the facts, and to make your wishes known. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. And just a reminder that that meeting will be at 6:00 p.m., not 7:00 p.m., just so people know.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Dan, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, not on that subject. Just, you know, I think the more people that shows up, the better for that, just like Terry said, especially people with interests along there. You know, the way I thought we left it, they might not be answering everyone's question is kind of what I, it was more of them taking comments, but we'll see what happens on.
But if you have concerns, please plan on attending.
Right.
Thank you.
Or if you can't make it, maybe send me or our town manager your questions and we can get asked there.
Anybody else with any issues that aren't on the agenda?
Hi, I'm Rita Bradbury. I would like to first start with a moment of gratitude for this wonderful hall we're meeting in and this great town hall we're also being a part of now. I know it's our town hall, and so often, I, well, I've moved from Buckston and I've gone by the Dayton one, I've gone by everybody else's, and we were at the bottom of the list, but I think we moved up very quickly. And so I want to take a moment of gratitude for all the people who were involved in this happen. You know, I know Mary wrote a terrific grant, she did a lot of planning, I know selectmen were all involved, the selectmen that weren't here were very involved, and it wouldn't have happened without this group, so, thank you. I also want to take a moment of gratitude because I'm on the Riverside Cemetery Association, and we had a problem that required some professional help, and even people in the town hall stepped up to help. Mary was there to help us with a problem we had with trash, and so did Butch Gannett, so he's a townsman, he's not even part of the Riverside Association, he's not part of the town. It was nice to have people step up, so I want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think this is a public thanks to those people. Lastly, I want to thank Nancy for that extensive research history and the wonderful gift from the Historical Society to the town, so. The last thing I did want to bring up, I had a little concern about walking along the roads, and I know you guys hear a lot of concerns, but this is a new one. My mother-in-law, who walks every day, she's 90 years old, and usually she doesn't get any harassment, and she feels safe most of the time, but somebody stopped and talked to her and said they were in enforcement, and that they told her directly that she needs to be off the road, that she's pretty, you know, pretty much she was getting the message that she was in the way. So they said something about the law has changed, which I Googled the main law for pedestrians, and it says that, what I read, you still have to stay at least three feet away from pedestrians in the road. I don't know if anything else has changed.
Right.
That's still correct?
That's right, I think you're right.
Okay, so I just want people to know that, you know...
I'll do some homework for you.
Pardon me?
I'll do you some homework for you.
Thank you, yeah. That's what I found online, but, you know, she's not somebody that should be arguing with people stopping, stopping her, so, you know, there's still concerns along the road, and whatever can be done, we'd be grateful for. Thanks, thanks for all your work.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? And then I would like to thank the Bar Mills Decommissioning Committee, who worked so hard with them. They met multiple times, they went on tours, and I just thank you for being there and supporting us and supporting our thoughts. And like you said, we can't, we can't represent everybody, because I don't know everybody's specific concerns, so please reach out to any of us and let us know if you have a specific concern and can't come to the meeting that night. Okay, so we need to have a motion to suspend the select board meeting and move into an executive session pursuant to Title I, MRS, section 405, 6A, to discuss personnel matter.
So ordered. Second?
All those in favor? So we're just going to move down the hall for a couple minutes, or a couple whatever, and we'll be back. And the town manager is invited.
He has four articles, to elect a moderator to amend Article thirty-one and begin a salary for the tax collector, to amend Article nineteen to include all areas of cluster subdivisions, which we didn't include in the vote that was held in June, and to amend Section one point five of the zoning ordinance of the town of Hollis concerning adoption of amendments. So they don't have to have meetings after we've already approved the warrant for June. So we'll be updating that probably at a public hearing at our next meeting so that we can get a, have the special town meeting on November nineteenth. And then we're going to be reviewing a couple policies that we have written that need a little tweaking, and we'll bring them back to the, for review at our next select board meeting. Thank you. So old business, like I said, we're going to have a special town meeting on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and that's, we didn't really have anything else to bring out of that committee. The minutes for nine seventeen twenty-five, we're going to review at the next meeting because Dan was absent, and we need three people to approve the minutes. And so I'm going to invite Bennett up to talk about new municipal town office update a little bit. We do have a couple bills that we need to approve, and I've now lost them, but one is from A and B Lock and Security. It's a final bill from them for a total of eleven thousand seven forty-six dollars that will be coming out of the building fund. Or actually, the total is sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. So that will be coming out, and Diane, I think, wanted just approval by the select board to pay that bill. So if you can just sign there. And then Bennett's going to be addressing the pro AV systems, because I think we thought that we could transfer some of the, some of the equipment from the community building over to here to utilize, and it didn't match. So we're going to have to spend a little more money on some more equipment for our AV system.
You said it perfectly, Mary.
Diane?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bennett?
Yeah, you said, yeah, you said it perfectly. There were two pieces of legacy equipment that included the telecaster, which we can control the cameras. And obviously, we really don't have good control currently.
So see?
Yeah, yeah, to do different camera angles and all of the good things that come with broadcasting.
So we just need all three signatures on these two. Sure. So, so that takes care of those two. And as you can see, we are in the new building. We do have some growing pains with like the echo, and we're going to be working on that. And little things with, oh, I guess, the security system, we're going to be putting, starting and stuff. So Dick, did you want to mention anything about the new town hall?
I think, I think we're tiptoeing through the tulips as we get the building broken in. Took us a while to work through the door combinations and a few other things. And I think this morning, we took a big step forward, and we'll be doing a little bit more on the security side. And then we met with the fire sprinkler people and the fire alarm people. It's a juggling act. But for now, I think we're moving in the right direction.
I think it's a lot of things that you don't know until you move into a building what it's going to be like. And so we probably would have designed it maybe a little different to decrease the echo and stuff, but we're going to figure out a way to decrease it. Assessing update, we are going to be signing tonight two tax abatement notices. Our, the taxes did come out last week, and as usual, there's always a couple issues that arise. One of them was one that happened last year also. We didn't make the sports complex fully exempt, so we had to abate forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And then we missed the homestead exemption, so we're going to abate those individuals, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. But so far, that's the only abatements that we've had to do. And the tree growth, we've been working on this all year to update the tree growth. Every, every ten years, you're supposed to get another tree growth plan, and during COVID, some of that fell by the wayside. So we sent out a whole bunch of letters and had a really good response, and we're down to ten individuals, some of which are for next year, and a total of fifteen properties that we need to get abated, I mean, to get new tree growth letters. So those will be signed and sent, be sent out tomorrow. The comprehensive planning committee has been working very hard. We're going to be meeting with Southern Maine Planning to develop a plan, but we're planning on having our first meeting, so we need to announce tonight. Our first public hearing on the comprehensive plan on November eighteenth, we'll be reviewing chapters one and two. And then our second public hearing will be on December sixteenth, where we'll review chapters three and four. More information will be coming out. We just have to check on a couple things and make sure the rooms are available. Roads update, I think all three roads have been paved, and I think they're, I don't know if they've done whatever you call, they've ditched them, but they have to put, well, gravel and stuff beside them, and I don't know if that's been done. Because what I was told was that's done on rainy days. They've had non-rainy days, so they haven't done that yet. So they'll probably be working on that in the next couple weeks. And Salmon Falls Library, they're going to start doing some of the siding and stuff around the twentieth of October, but they've done a lot of the grounds and, and stuff. We don't have a report on the carryforwards yet. Dick, do we?
I'm sorry?
Carryforwards?
I have been, I have been told that we're very close. We went through a brief discussion of what looks like a number, but he wanted to go back over, and Roger wanted to go back over and confirm that. But it was, I don't dare to say what it was, because I don't know that he's landed there.
And then as, as many of you are aware, we don't have a Hollis election this year. We just have the two referendum questions from the state. Number one and two, one's about voting, and the other one's about gun control. And our ballot box has been placed at the opposite end of the building by the driveway, right?
Yeah, between the, between the community center and the new town hall, to the right of the main entrance, properly mounted on a cement plat, platform, and ready to take ballots.
And absentee ballots are available. I did vote absentee, and if you want to come into the town hall, pick up your ballot, and within sight of the town clerk vote, you can do that, or you can take it home and vote and bring it back or whatever. But it's only the two questions. So I recommend that if you don't think you can get out on the day to vote, that you come in and do absentee. It's very easy, and it's very accessible. Anybody have any other comments on any of those issues?
Nothing for me.
Nothing? You sure?
Yep.
Okay, now we're in new business, town manager updates.
We've had a busy, we've had a busy couple of weeks. We've had one town hall wrap-up with the general contractors. They have a short punch list that they're still working on. We're going to meet with them by Zoom or whatever it's called these days, next week. We have had discussions about floor care and the foul weather that's at our doorstep soon, and we've got a solution for that, where we have moved forward to put, I'll call them door mats, but do it path mats in front of each window and in the doorway so that when the, when the rain and the foul weather hits, these floors won't be scarred. And also, there are chairs in front of each of the windows that if they scuff around a lot, it's going to make damage on the floors. We don't need to do that this quickly. So we're going to have those, try that out. It'll also help with the acoustical challenges that we have in the lobby area. Winter roads, I heard you address that. Today, we had a review of the contractor and their equipment and their driver licenses and so forth. And we'll pull that data together the next day or so and be ready for the first foul weather. We already talked about fire alarm service and, and security service. We're working through those, the bumps in that road. There's been some training and a lot of training scheduled, and we encourage those in the town to train whenever they can so that there's the best of the best at, at the hand of our residents. We did have ergonomics, what do you call that, assessment? And every indication is we passed. I didn't hear there were any significant issues.
She came around and watched you, and of course, then you type everything wrong, and if she read it, she'd go, what are you typing? But she watched you at your computer and looked at how you were seated and what you were using. And she basically just made some recommendations for moving some screens up or down, or getting different devices to help you with your computer so you were ergonomically safe.
She, when I saw her laugh, she said, we look pretty good. There were a few glitches.
And I think the biggest addition for us is that we now have the desks that raise up and down, so you can move and with your, no, but she just had, you know, like she recommended I get a little holder for my stuff so I wasn't looking down on the thing that was up, and that I might want to try my computer on the little thingamajig where it can bump my head at the computer. But she was very nice, and it was a very interactive day.
And one, and just two more quick things. We did get our results back for our insurance inspection in past. We have one issue, CO detection up near the heating system. That's a plug-in model. It is not a big event. We'll take care of that. And finally, I just want to repeat what was said earlier. For those folks who can, please visit on the tenth, that's a Thursday evening at six PM for the Bar Mills Dam decommissioning discussion. If you can't show up, it will be televised, I understand. So you can listen in and may be able to call in. But it's, it's important. It's a one-in-a-lifetime event in many cases. So we need all the feedback that we can get.
And so that's on the thirtieth.
Right. And then last but not least, I want to commend the drivers that I'm encountering on my way to work who are slowing down by the school system, slowing to the thirty-five zone, and then dropping even further as they pass the school's entrance with the lights flashing in the school district. I really appreciate that. Those kids are full of energy when they come in and out of that school, and they need to be monitored very closely. Thank you very much.
And I know also that just to go, I thought of something about election, now I forgot it, but just to go back to, I know many people have voiced some concerns about the Salmon Falls Bridge, and Dick has been working with DOT and met with some of the local residents to discuss the four A construction project and stuff. And they'll probably be having a public hearing at some, some point to discuss those issues with the town as a whole. So we will be announcing that. But he's been working very hard with them. He met with the, the DOT and individuals about that concern, because sometimes people think, oh, we came to one meeting and you forgot about us, but we haven't. Oh, and the other thing with elections is that we are aware that we haven't been finally approved for elections, because we have to get the paving done prior to the elections. We're planning on hopefully doing the paving on Monday, which is supposed to be a rainy day, but we'll work through that if we have to. We'll figure out a plan. So. Any other comments, Mike?
Nothing for me.
We're going to have a workshop with the finance committee for the upcoming budget season on ten twenty-nine. So it's a Wednesday at three PM. So that will be a joint meeting workshop with both the finance committee and members of the select board. So we just need to do a public announcement. We are going to be having a meeting where there might be more than two of us or three of us at the meeting to talk with the finance committee. Okay, so the next thing we need to do is appoint for state of Maine referendum election eleven for twenty twenty-five, Lila Wilkins as the election warden. So today, the fifteenth of October, we're going to appoint Lila Wilkins of Hollis and County of York and the state of Maine. We do in accordance with the provisions of the law of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as election warden for the state of Maine referendum election held on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. And we did check with the town clerk, and we're also appointing all the, the election clerks, but we don't have to read all of their names. So we will be appointing multiple clerks to the election, and it's our usual cast of, cast of people that do help us with our elections, and we really appreciate all of them. So I need a motion to appoint, the appointment.
Can we do so or, you know, what, make a motion to appoint for the state of Maine referendum election eleven for twenty twenty-five, Lila Wilkins, election warden and election clerk. I'll second it.
All those in paper. Aye.
Aye.
And there's multiple pages to sign.
We did ask Lila if she wants to be there, right?
We did, yeah. And then I lost, uh-oh, might be under here. I lost something. Yep. And then we're going to do a policy update, number sixty-seven, recreation fee reduction for town employees. And we have a policy that allows all town employees and officials to obtain a fifty percent fee reduction for all recreation programs for dependents in their household with the exception of special events. Additional fee reductions due to financial hardship will be reviewed by the town manager and recreation department on a case-by-case basis. So. So I need a motion to accept policy number sixty-seven.
Make a motion to approve the amendments to policy sixty-seven? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we're up to purchase orders and. Payroll and warrant totals, you do that so well.
I have a very low voice right now.
Do you want Dan to do it?
Yeah, you know, it's probably easier.
He's got a cold. Sorry about that.
Okay, warrant last week, one million one hundred seventy-seven thousand six hundred seventeen. Warrant this week, ninety-six thousand seven hundred three dollars. Payroll last week, thirty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-seven. Payroll this week, thirty-four thousand four hundred and eleven. Purchase orders, purchase order number four five four seven to R M D L Inc. This is for two days to create a ditch on the east side of Chadbourne Ridge Road. Include seeding hay to prevent erosion for a total of seventy-seven hundred dollars. We have purchase order forty-five forty-eight also to R M D L. That is for cleaning the ditch on George Connors Road to eliminate puddling on the dirt road for a total of thirty-nine hundred dollars. Last one is forty-six forty-nine to Visa Card under the Parks and Rec for the senior bus trip charter payment to Northeast Charter and Tour Inc. And that was for two thousand six hundred dollars.
Thank you. And you probably just missed those, Diane, when you have a chance. So I know that the one warrant was really high last week. One million one hundred seventy-seven sixty-one. And I think that was because we had one of our final bills from Great Falls for the construction of the building and probably the school budget, you know? So would account for them. I wasn't here, so for sure, but that's probably what it was. Correspondence and announcements. There will be an informational meeting regarding the Barmills Dam decommissioning with Brookfield White Pine Hydro LLC on Thursday, October thirtieth at six P M at the Hollistown Meeting Room. This will be recorded and broadcast, public notice with more information is on our website. And I think the last time we had a meeting with them, they gave us cards, and then you turned in the cards and they answered your questions. Are you interested in learning about and having input in the development of the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Bonny Eagle School District budget? The Budget Advisory Committee is seeking citizen volunteers to review budget information and make recommendations to the District Budget Committee and the School Board. To apply, please complete the Budget Advisory application on our website or at bonnyeagle.org. Applications to do by Friday, October thirty-first. If you have any questions, please contact Iva Davenport in nine two nine two three one eight or email idavdavenport@bonnyeagle.org. And it's very important that residents participate in that. So I really would strongly advise it. They usually meet on a Thursday. They probably meet six or seven times generally, starting maybe in December. I didn't see the dates they were meeting. But it generally is on a Thursday evening, and it lasts from six P M to seven thirty. And they're committed to just doing that hour and a half, so. There will be a rabies vaccination clinic on Saturday, December sixth, from one to three P M at the Buxton Public Works Garage, two fifteen Portland Road. Cost is eight dollars per vaccination, cash only. Dogs must be on a leash and cats in carriers. Bring your pet's previous vaccination certificate for faster service and three-year vaccination. Sponsored by the Hollis Animal Clinic, the towns of Buxton and Hollis, and the Vacation Land Dog Club. Join the officers and the board of the Buxton Hollis Historical Society on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, as they celebrate the transfer of ownership of the nineteen twelve building from MS eighty-six to the town of Buxton and to be Buxton Hollis Historical Society. Five to six P M with a social hour, followed by the recognition of outstanding volunteers. Dinner is served at six P M, followed by the showing of the film, The Gunpower Mills remain. Bring a dish to share in your party spirit as B H H S brings, begins a new chapter in its history. Thank you to Norman and Cheryl Parker for their very generous donation to our heat fund. A reminder that the town hall has point bags available to those who wish to donate their returnables to the heat fund. Is there any other business? Mike?
I don't know.
Diane?
I just had a quick word about the Historical Society Building. I know they've gone through a lot. You know, they've been leasing it from Sad Sex for a while, and they've been going through quite the process over the last year or so to get that transferred to them. So that's a great accomplishment that a lot of those members who are here even were part of.
So if you can join them, they really would appreciate it. They'd love to party in that group. So it should be a fun event, and I heard the film is really good, too, so. Anything else? Ms. Bev?
Bev Harris, River Road. I would like to thank you for voting to do the pledge at the start of the meeting.
Thank you.
And I hope that you will encourage the other boards to do as well.
That, that's actually already been done. It will prob, it's probably a done deal, just.
Good.
Yep.
And it was nice to get out of the vehicle and see the parking lot so lit up. I was impressed.
Nice lighting out there. I came home from Rhode Island last night. It was really nice to see it all lit up. So I just, you know, I started turning, and I said, oh, it's lit up.
Right. And I also would like to remind people to mark your calendars for December thirteenth for Reis Across America here at the Meeting House Hill Cemetery, which is just up the road from here. And we've always had a good turnout, and we hope to have the same this year.
Can you say that date again?
December thirteenth.
December thirteenth.
And what time is it usually, Bev?
Nine A M.
It is, if you haven't been, it is probably one of the most remarkable ceremonies. It's very touching. And even if you don't have a veteran in the cemetery, they allow you to.
Oh, yes.
Search and find veterans that we put Reis for. So it's very, a very nice ceremony, and they do a wonderful job every year.
We have over a hundred and thirty veterans in that cemetery. So, yeah, we have a lot of Reis to put out, so I'm sure.
And if you go to the old section, Bev is up there directing you.
To find them all.
So you're going to have to read every answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Bev.
Anybody on Zoom? Can you see Zoom?
Oh, yeah, I can. Yeah, we got three people on Zoom. No one's raising their hand.
Okay. Upcoming town committees and board meetings. If you want to read those, Diane, that'd be great.
Sure. Next one is the Conservation Commission meets Thursday, October sixteenth at five thirty P M. The planning board meeting and public hearing is on Wednesday, October twenty-second at seven P M. There's the finance committee and select board workshop on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth at three P M. There is an informational meeting regarding the Barmills Dam decommissioning that's here Thursday, October thirtieth at six P M. That's for Buxton and Hollis to come to. Then there is the next select board meeting on Wednesday, November fifth at seven P M.
And I guess I jumped out of turn. Is there any other public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, just one quick second. Dick, did you have anything else?
A big pardon.
Did you have anything else? Diane? Mike?
Mike has nothing else.
Okay.
I am going to make a motion to adjourn again.
I second that motion.
Thank you, everybody.